... We're about invitation of prayers and privileges by council and government.
My most gracious God, Creator of all things, and blessed upon us all with grace and mercy. Thank you for allowing us together in peace tonight. And how to join together in prayer, Lord, to thank you for all things. Be with us and go with us, Lord, and guide us in directions for the city of Statesboro. And we thank thee for that and all that in your blessings and pray all things in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of which we stand, one nation, under our, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
We'll move down to agenda item number four, which was consideration of public presentation. We have the presentation of our comprehensive annual financial report. Would you be?
Good afternoon. First of all, we just want to thank the city council for opting for our firm to serve as the city officers again this year. And I thank you to the finance department staff, Cindy and her staff, getting all the information together for us to do that annual audit. You have a copy of the capra. There's a lot of information in here. I'm just going to try to just point out a few things to keep this very brief. In the financial statements, you do have an annual discussion of the houses. It gives a lot of good summary information on the financial statements. And that's on pages three through twelve of the capra. You can read through that. It gives you some of the information. If you look on page thirteen of the financial statements, too. Does everybody have a copy?
We sent them out.
Yeah. All right. Well, on page thirteen fourteen is the government-wide financial statements. So that includes all the funds, all the assets liabilities of the city. And it's the governmental activities and the business-type activities. And then the component unit being the downtown development authority. And you can see the total assets for the city for all activity, all funds is one hundred and twenty-seven million, six hundred and forty-six thousand. Total assets for the city increased about almost seven million, about six percent. Total liability for the city were twenty-eight point seven million. Total liability has actually decreased about three hundred thousand. One of your large liabilities is the OPEB liability. You have six million, four hundred and seventy-one thousand in the OPEB payable. Your total net position for the city, you can see down at the bottom, was ninety-eight million, three hundred and fifty-five thousand. Your total net position actually increased about five point eight million, about six percent increase in total net position. Of that ninety-eight million in that position, seventy-five point six million is invested in capital assets and as related debt. You have unrestricted net position of about fourteen point nine million. Again, this is a government-wide. You turn the page, statement of activities. The expenses for the governmental activities, this includes depreciation on capital assets. Your total expenses were very comparable to the prior year on a government-wide basis. Your tax, all tax revenues in total, including property taxes, insurance premium taxes, everything. Total taxes increased about six hundred and sixty thousand from the prior year. You can see down at the bottom, near the bottom, transfers, the business-type activities transferred one million, one hundred and seventy-four thousand to the governmental activities. The business-type expenses were very comparable to the prior year also. The revenues for the business-type revenues were also very comparable to the prior year in total. Page fifteen is the governmental funds. First column is the general fund. Total assets for the general fund were six million, eighteen thousand. And that's an increase of about a million, one hundred and fifty thousand, about twenty-three percent increase in total assets for the general fund. The general fund fund balance, you'll see on that first column at the bottom is five point two million. Your general fund balance increased one point one million, about a twenty-seven percent increase. And been able to restore the fund balance for the city over the last couple of years, which is very good. If you looked at the fund balance at June thirty, two thousand and eighteen, it represents approximately thirty-nine percent of your annual expenditures and transfers out. So that's good. You could at least, well, minimum of twenty-five percent of fund balance of your annual expenditures. But that's, there was a time, you know, several years ago that that wasn't the case. You can see that the SPOS fund, the two thousand and thirteen SPOS fund, had a fund balance of about five point four million. That was an increase of about a million, one hundred and fifty-eight thousand, twenty-seven percent. If you turn to page seventeen, this is the revenues and expenditures for the governmental funds. Again, the first column being the general fund. General fund revenue compared to prior year increased about five percent. General fund expenses, expenditures increased about four percent from the prior year. The third column, there is SPOS revenue was six point one million. SPOS revenue increased about four hundred and eighty thousand, or eight and a half percent for revenue. SPOS revenue received from the county. Pages nineteen and twenty is the saving of revenues and expenditures for the general fund compared to budget. Total revenues were one hundred and seventy thousand over budget for the year. And the next page on expenditures. Total expenditures, you can see, were one point, were one million, one hundred and eighty thousand under budget. And so you have a total payable balance for the budget of a million, three hundred and fifty-three thousand for the year. The enterprise fund financial statements start on page twenty-three, or twenty-two, twenty-two, twenty-three, and twenty-four. Just to point out on the statement of revenues and expenses on page twenty-three for the enterprise funds. You see that the total increase in that position, if you look down at the bottom, the change in that position, the total increase was about three point one million. Increase or five percent increase for all the enterprise funds. The total operating income, your operating income less your operating expenses actually decreased by five hundred and sixty-four thousand. But you still had the large increase in total, three point one million increase in that position. The saving cash flows on the next page. And the net increase in cash for the enterprise fund was one point eight million. And then after the basic financial statements or the notes to the basic financial statements, a lot more detailed information in there. On the interfund transfers, interfund balances, capital assets, notes payable, so forth, gives you more detailed information. And then there's a lot of supplemental information on the various funds after the notes. And of course, the statistical section. Wanted to kind of keep this very brief. But if anyone has any questions or people had to go over in more detail, would anybody, you know, somebody above the top?
Council, any questions? Seeing that there isn't one.
I'd like to make a quick comment, reference to that fund balance?
Yes.
It's good to see this moving up.
Yes. Yes, several years ago, it was did look too good. But yeah, over the last couple of years, I think it actually increases a couple of million dollars in the back toward the end. All right.
Thank you.
And I just want to say that city's department does a really great job of all the financing and stuff. But it's, but it, the entire staff has worked to make sure that those numbers come out positive. And they're very conservative in their, in their spending. And we're also conservative when we look at the revenue. So this year came out to be a really good year, but it takes everybody to make sure that when he can stand up here and these numbers actually occur, it takes, it takes everybody in the organization to do that. I just wanted to pass it on.
Do you agree? We'll move down to agenda item number four, which is public comments. Just seeing if you have any public comments. Seeing that we don't have any, we'll move down to agenda item five, which is consideration of a motion to approve the consent agenda. A approval of minutes for council meeting minutes for March fifth, or council minutes for March twelfth. And call executive session minutes for March twelfth as well. That's also a consideration of motion to approve the surplus of thirteen five, student forms that have either been forfeited or evidence files that are no longer needed for prosecution. Is there a motion to approve?
Remove.
Second.
Second.
All of them favorable?
Aye.
We'll move on to agenda item six, which is a public hearing and consideration of a motion to approve alcohol license application. For board and brush, Ms. Johnna Eaton, twenty South Main Street, Statesboro, Georgia. Is there a motion to enter into the public hearing?
Remove.
For the second.
Aye.
All right. And where's Chief not here? There you go. Any, any problems?
No.
Okay, good. Chief?
Nervous.
All right. Come here.
Nervous.
Okay. Land and Zoner?
Nervous.
Is there anyone here to speak for the request?
Hi, I'm Johnna Eaton, business owner of the board brush. Can I answer any questions in regard to our business model with Maven?
Okay. We'll get to council discussion in a moment, but we appreciate you.
Thank you.
All right. Is there anyone here to speak against? All right. Is there anybody here to speak for or against? All right. All right, then, is there a motion to close the hearing?
We are asking a comment.
We'll get to that.
Remove.
Is there a second? All right. Council discussion, council adjutant.
Comment, majesty, Miss Eaton? Fancy your presence. That's good. In fact, there's no issues with you. The post department, so good. Fancy your presence and hopefully.
Any further discussion by council? Is there a motion to approve?
Remove.
Second. All right, all of them favorable?
Aye.
All right, we move down to agenda item seven, which is the public hearing, the first lead ordinance twenty-nine, twenty nineteen oh one. An ordinance admitting the application of the city's open container exemptions to the DSDA sanctioned events. Is there a motion to open the public hearing?
Remove.
Second. All of them favorable?
Aye.
Okay.
Mayor, council, at the, at the March fifth meeting, council board had requested an ordinance. And then regarding the application process and the costs associated with it for, for DSDA sanctioned events. In, in compliance with the new ordinance presentation protocol we have. So I did add in addition to, to subsection, to section six seventeen. And this would be the, this would be application of open container waivers to downtown Statesboro Development Authority event. It says, "This prohibition shall not apply to any event approved by the DSDA Board of Directors officially sanctioned by the DSDA and held in a predetermined area, agreed to by DSDA and Statesboro Police Department. The DSDA Executive Director shall give notice of time and duration of such event to the chief of SDA, of the police department, of fire department, and all citizens, and clerk, not less than ten days prior to when the event is held. And the DSDA would be exempt from the cost requirement set out in six seventeen V two," which is where the police department makes, determines how many officers are going to be needed and for how long. So that cost is passed on to the applicant. That would not be the case with this DS, with this, with the DSDA event. Furthermore, with the new ordinance presentation, the way it is, unless there are substantial or material revisions requested with the ordinance as presented today, this could, this can stand in for, be considered the first reading of this. So it could be second reading and consideration passage at April second meeting.
Is there anyone here to speak for the request? Anyone here to speak against? Is there a motion to close the hearing?
Remove.
Second. All of them favorable?
Aye.
All right, any discussion by council? All right. Seeing that there is no, no discussion by council, we'll move on to agenda item.
Do y'all wish this to be moved forward, the second reading and consideration? Who needs council approval for that?
Do we need to make a motion?
I would forward.
I'll make that motion.
All right. I'll second that motion.
Moving forward to the second reading, that's what it should be.
And consideration, correct.
Okay.
All right, all of them favorable?
Aye.
Thank you. We'll move on to agenda item number eight. This is a public hearing and consideration of a motion to approve application filed nineteen oh two oh one. Walmart Stores Incorporated requests a variance from Article fifteen, section fifteen oh nine C. Table five of the Statesboro zoning ordinance regarding the maximum number of building signs allowed, allowed in sign district three. Over.
Yes, sir. Good evening, Mayor, Council, Owen Dundee, City Planner Two. I've got
Is there a motion to open the public hearing?
Remove.
Sir? All right, all of them favorable?
Aye.
Now, Owen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, Mayor, Council, Owen Dundee, City Planner Two. I have the pleasure of filling in for Frank Neal, our assistant, our interim assistant city manager this evening. The Department of Planning and Development has one request on the night's agenda for council's consideration. It's a sign variance request located at three, four, nine Brandon Avenue. That's the Walmart Neighborhood Market. The request is variance from Article fifteen, section fifteen oh nine C, table five, regarding the maximum number of building signs allowed in sign district three. The applicant is BRR Architecture Incorporated. The owners are Walmart Stores Incorporated. The parcel is approximately five point six to one acres in size. And it is located in Councilman Duke's district. The proposal, the applicant requests a variance from Article fifteen, section fifteen oh nine C, table five, the Statesboro zoning ordinance regarding the maximum number of building signs allowed in sign district three. Specifically, the applicant's goal is to install one additional building sign on the front elevation for the Walmart Neighborhood Market's online virtual pickup service. And if I could turn everyone's attention to the TV, we'll go through this proposal here. Location map, three, four, nine Brandon Avenue, the Walmart Neighborhood Market. Got some site and surrounding property photos, the attached retail neighborhood, Walmart, neighborhood Walmart itself. Surrounded gas station, got some fast food restaurants that are located on the out parcel of Walmart, Panda Express, McDonald's. Walker on Medical backs up to the rear of the Walmart there. Also, hand for hand across the street, little core accretion in construction site and some other market district retail restaurants kind of off in the distance there in the bottom right picture. And some more surrounding property photos, got some vacant land and special office and business park. Here is the proposed signage plans for the Walmart Neighborhood Market. You'll see the proposed sign there located over the orange door, the right-hand side of the building elevation. And I have exhibit G, which I'll leave on the screen and briefly, that's included in the packet. It's just, the applicant has gone ahead and went through our various consideration points and answered each one in regards to the request for this zoning ordinance. Staff has reviewed and recommended approval of this variance request by application V nineteen oh two oh one with the following staff conditions. Number one, the approval of this variance does not allow the construction of proposed signage. Applicant will be required to submit a sign per an application for staff review and approval prior to construction commencement. And number two, the property owner shall diligently monitor the number of temporary slash real estate sign signs or move any such signs within the time allotted, thirty days per the market district restricted covenants. The second condition on there, that was a requirement from the market district ARC review board. There's a set of restricted covenants on all those properties over there in that location, where they all have to be submitted for additional architectural review. So that was the one condition that came out of this applicant's request for the additional signage. And I believe that the applicant is here to speak on this request behalf.
Thank you. All right, anyone here to speak, to speak for the application?
My name is Stephanie Martin. I'm here with BRR Architecture on behalf of Walmart Stores.
We'll get to, get to that through our council discussion.
And then council, I'm sorry. One more point I forgot to mention, the planning commission did review this proposal and voted unanimously to approve it with staff conditions.
Thank you. Is there anyone here to speak against? All right, seeing that it does not, is there a motion to close the hearing?
Remove.
Second.
Second.
All of them favorable?
Aye.
Is there any council discussion? I've seen that there is none. Is there a motion, is there a motion to vote to approve?
Remove.
Sir? All of them favorable?
Aye.
Let's show agenda item eight has passed. With staff approval. Okay.
Condition.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, the motion is to be, is to be approved with staff recommendations. We'll move down to agenda item nine, which is consideration of a motion to enter into a government agreement between Georgia Environmental Finance Authority and the city of Statesboro for five point five billion dollars in the rate investment funds. Okay?
Mayor, council, this, this is not, this is an intergovernmental agreement between city, Statesboro, and Georgia Environmental Financing Authority, where JPO would, would pay the city five and a half millions in state direct investment funds under government, the governor's water supply program in order to construct an impound dam, Little Lots Creek and its resulting upstream reservoir. In exchange for that, JPO would get one hundred percent of the water yield created that way. There, the contract, there, there are some, there are some set parameters in it. And that is, the reservoir has to, has to impound no less than twenty million gallons of raw water and also have an established minimum yield of three hundred thousand gallons a day. Also, the project site is designated in, in that area, Councilman Jones' district. But the exact parameters of the reservoir placement of the impound dam are currently unknown. And it's subject to engineer findings and approval by the Army Corps of Engineers and State E P D. Should that approval not happen, then this does not happen, then the, then the construction does not happen. I just, we just want to be clear on that, that, that there's still a lot of room, there's still some work to do on this. Anytime you're dealing with, even though Little Lots Creek, in practical terms, an apple water, as far as a legal term, it is an apple water. What that means is that the federal jurisdiction does overlay that. And that's why we have to have Corps of Engineers involvement in these sorts of projects in order to make sure that we're, we do it in a way that, that will be approved ultimately. Because without that, we simply wouldn't get the funding and it wouldn't be built where, where it is. And just want to be clear on that. But the funds are supposed to be delivered to, to the city by the end of this year. These, this is a, this is a state direct investment. This is not, there are no repayment terms because there aren't, there is no repayment. In exchange for five and a half million dollars, they get the entirety of the water supply yield created by the impound dam and its resulting reservoir.
Thank you, Ken. Is there any discussion from council? Seeing that it is none, is there a motion to approve?
Remove.
Second.
Sir?
All of them favorable?
Aye.
We'll move down to agenda item ten, which is consideration of a motion to approve the downtown TAD advisory committee's bylaws and policies and procedures. Okay?
Mayor, council, presented for y'all today are the, are the bylaws and the policies and procedure statement that have been ratified by the downtown TAD advisory committee. These were, these were approved, they're January thirty first, two thousand and nineteen. We, the, our intergovernmental agreement with Bullock County requires mayor council approval of their minutes and bylaws before they take the test. They're, they're set out in the agenda. Essentially, what the TAD advisory committee does is they assess applications for tax segment funding. That would be projects within the TAD that are asking for TAD assistance that wouldn't, that wouldn't otherwise be able to, to be completed. So what they would do is they would approve any sort of, any sort of projects. And then after that, the projects would have to come to mayor and council, with the city being the redevelopment agency in this TAD for ultimate approval of whether that funding is granted or not.
Thank you, Ken. Is there, is there any discussion by council? I've seen that there isn't, if there is none, is there a motion to approve?
Remove.
Is there a second?
Second.
All of them favorable?
Aye.
We'll move down to agenda item eleven, consideration of a motion for mayor council to appoint a member to the Statesboro diversity inclusion committee to fill vacancies. Committee's recommendation is Mrs. Annie Hill, if I'm not mistaken. Ken, if you would give us some insight on that.
Mayor, council, section two fifty-five of the city code order says best interim, best interim appointments is the mayor and council. We have an interim appointment here as original voting member, Shereen Plymouth, has resigned. So this is simply a, an opportunity for mayor council to appoint a person to fill that vacancy as a voting member of the diversion and inclusion committee.
Any discussion by council?
I know Ms. Hill is in the audience, and I know she'd like to be a part of it. And I know Ms. Hill needs to be a great access to groups like that, who basically will
Any further discussion? Seeing that there isn't, is there a motion?
Remove. Second.
What, the, the motion to
To accept Ms. Hill.
Okay. In the second?
Yeah.
All right, all of them favorable?
Aye.
All right, congratulations to this. All right, we'll move down to agenda item twelve, consideration of a motion to approve resolution twenty nineteen oh nine, a resolution imposing twenty nineteen influence alcoholic beverage fee for the removal of current alcoholic beverage licenses due based on city physical year for a wholesale change of, of all premise consumption types and fees. As well as transitioning to calendar year basis for license. Okay?
Mayor, council, renewals on alcohol beverage licenses as due on July first. We have, y'all had earlier approved a, approved a measure as to underage admission to, to different types of establishments. And also put, that was in section six nine. And then in section, section six three, actually put in the definitions of, of what would qualify as each of these, of these premises types. I've been in discussion with Captain Winsteed a lot on this. And at this point, we simply don't, I mean, it's just, it's conjecture for us to determine what, what sort of businesses are going to require more allocation of law enforcement resources and which ones won't. I mean, it's not, you know, it could turn out that the things that look like they're going to be the worst, which are bars with hundred twenty-one, are in fact the easiest to regulate. And the restaurants are, take up the most of law enforcement resources. So what we're proposing to do would be to allow a six month, to allow two thousand and nineteen interim period, whereas the current applicant could renew for a six-month term with the, with the premises operating as, as whatever venue type they're, they're designated. designated or they have negotiated with, um, Spacemore Police Department with. And at that point, we would have a better idea of how to scale these license ties. We're trying to keep the revenue from, um, from these own premises licenses as, as neutral as possible and we simply can't do that without knowing who's going to take up the most resources. And, um, for that reason, what would be proposed is that we would do this interim two thousand nineteen period and then in two thousand twenty, the, um, we would have the fees for these different types of venues and the year term for the, um, for the licenses would begin on January first, two thousand twenty. At that point, I believe we've had discussions about removing the type of beverages that are, that are sold as it is now where you pay one fee for beer, one fee for wine and one fee for, um, distilled. What this would be instead is the, um, for any on premises consumption fee would be dictated entirely by the type of business it is, not by the particular type of alcoholic port. So in order to do that, we need to get the fees right, we need this time to, um, to determine what needs, where our resources are going. I think with the beginning of school and football season and everything that's going to happen in the months between July first and the end of the year and hopefully by, um, the beginning of October, we'll have a much better idea of what, how that looks. And, um, at that point, we would do a wholesale revision of the, um, of the types of licenses for on premises consumption along with, um, along with scale, license fees resulting from our findings. And that's a lot. There are many questions on it. I mean, I confuse myself saying that, so.
To sum up, if I can drive it.
Sure.
It's, uh, this is a trans, uh, transition ordinance to get us from where we are right now to where we want to be, which is licenses renewing in, at December thirty first as opposed to July first, adjusting the prices according to the particular type of business you are after the police study the impact of those businesses on expenditures, as well as eliminating the B, C, D, E, F and all that kind of stuff, which is just very confusing and streamline the alcohol license. There's some of those.
I think the Phil's notes on that are very accurate.
Sounds like a good idea.
Is there a motion to approve?
Remove.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Moving down to agenda item thirteen, which is consideration of a motion toward the purchase of a C N D tour, that two fifty truck for the natural gas department to Calum River Four as they offered the lowest sponsored, sponsored bid in the amount of forty thousand four hundred and ninety-two dollars. This vehicle is a budgeted, uh, has a budgeted amount of forty-six thousand dollars in its budget in this, in twenty nineteen under capital improvement, number N D D dash five four C. See? Is there a motion to approve?
Remove.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Steve.
Don't scratch.
Agenda item fourteen, consideration of a motion to approve award posse rights to branch of equipment company in the amount of ninety-nine thousand dollars for purchase of tractor and more in the solid waste, uh, disposal, um, division funded is by twenty thirty twenty-two hours. Jason, you might talk us about it.
This is a scheduled replacement of a tractor and a flexing rotor in, in a motor. And so we received two bids for this, uh, this equipment and we loaded it with line for equipment company amount of eighty-nine thousand dollars. It is a little over our budget, however, we do have funds in, uh, in spots for this. So we recommend a board contract to let you know.
Any discussion by council? Right, seeing that there is, if there's none, is there a motion to approve?
Remove.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
So we'll move on to agenda item fifteen, other business. Um, let me see. Is there, is there any other business by council? Oh, yeah. Um, the appointments for the city assessment, uh, for the city manager assessment, do we have any recommendations? No?
Those are going to be the public, the, the, the three public people who would be a part of the assessment center group, and I think there's a team that have already been selected from around the area that are.
Yeah, it's going to be those here, that's going to be.
It's going to be local.
Got you.
Okay. And then, Ken, what's the best rock to do? Is this the best to do with an ad hoc way or separate appointment?
Okay, you do is just a point because all they're going to do is just serve for that for those couple of days on the assessment center and the consultant will determine on which assessment center they're gonna, they're gonna sit. The thing is, is we need to do this now because, because the assessment center is going to be next Thursday and Friday, so we need to appoint whoever y'all want.
Okay.
And that's y'all's choice.
Okay. All right.
May I remind you there?
Just three of them. Yeah. All right, so do we, so how do we want, do we, do we have any names? Anybody would like to?
I'd like to put forth Kenneth Panell.
Kenneth Panell? All right. All right, um, I would like to put forth Curtis Woody and Dorsey Ball. Okay.
The three or there one more?
Um, well, that, that would be three, but if you wanted, do you want to add someone?
Well, I think Ms. Mary, um, Lee Oden would be interested in, but we have three.
Have you talked to her about it?
I have.
Does she agree?
Yes, she has.
Okay.
So if we have four, let me visit with the consultant and see if four can fit on there because I think there's four different scenarios that they're going to go through. So if we can use four, we'll use four. If it's three, I'll let you know and y'all can figure out who to add.
Okay.
For zooming in.
All right.
Should we just take one from each person and just go that way and ask who else to be an alternate? Because we only have, come out and go to a league later. That was the only reason I asked.
Yeah, I'd like to weigh this way, though.
We'll see, we'll, we'll see if there's, if there's four, we'll, we'll fit them in there. That should be clear.
Yeah. Okay. All right, and let me see. Is there, say anything yet as far as under the city council? No? All right, Miss Sue, uh, for the next agenda, I want you to add, um, the appointment for the, um, creek project for the next agenda. For that first meeting in April or if there's a call meeting in between now and then.
All right, so are we, are we asking for votes that maybe want to serve to submit their names?
Yeah.
Who is they submitting their names to?
Well, we want to submit them to staff and staff, regular folks.
Who, who on staff?
I'd like to thank our city manager.
Okay.
I'll get him to Sue.
Okay.
I just gave you the name.
Ren.
All right, um, all right, and then so we'll move on down to city manager comments or the city manager comments.
Derek, I want to talk about, uh, Art Center.
Thank you. Probably approximately about a week and a half ago, we were notified by the Art Center Director that they're having H back trouble with one of the main units of the Art Center and it's a very old unit and long story short, it takes approximately seven thousand dollars to, had a premium on it to get it working and it doesn't last because it leaks on such an old unit. So we're currently, we're basically notifying you guys and, um, we're basically, um, going to get written quotes. We usually go through advertising process, but we're dealing with kind of emergency situation units. As you know, it's pretty hot in summer and it's hard to run programs over there when it's, uh, the heat's coming on. But, uh, due to the process of our advertising traditionally, uh, going through the steps of approval, it's, you know, probably about three, three and a half weeks and then the lead time on these industrial commercial units, because they usually don't have them sitting around, is up to three months. And so you're looking at possibly three and a half, four months before, at best, we'd have a unit on top of that because they have to crane and schedule and whatnot. So we're asking, you know, their approval to, uh, basically go through, uh, with our written quotes and, uh, get this process rolling and we'll report back to you, uh, when we have those firm numbers. Uh, the, the projection is anywhere eighty-five to a hundred and five thousand. Because these units, they're huge, they don't pop, they have to lift in the cranes and whatnot.
Any discussion by council? Is there a motion to approve?
You're allowed to approve.
Okay, we're good?
Yep. We're good over there.
Thank you.
Jason, if you're here, let's, uh, update on the exhibit G.
Yeah, so we're, I think so long for application for the, uh, the city project, um, to P C A, on the deadline. And I did, um, with my consultant that we selected to work with, our administration recommended that be disclosed that one of our staff members who's assisting in the collection of surveys from citizens in the area, as he does own property in that area, is on staff, but, um, this project was not initiated by him, it was actually just more initiated by me and Frank to move forward. And William just started with the city about four, six weeks ago. They thought it was a good idea and transparency and we agree that, uh, we just wanted to put that out there. We've been doing a great job collecting surveys from citizens, knows everybody in the area. Our success rate in gaining citizen input this time around has been a lot better than it was when we did this three years ago. I attribute that to Justin and William working diligently with the homeowner in that area and their participation and interest in the project. I think the fact they can look down the road and see progress in a cantilever Brian Street also helps to see what's coming, potentially to their, their neighborhood that's approved. We'll know when we get the grant application off, it'll take a few months, probably, probably fall, maybe August, September before we hear about that, uh, where we'll get that grant.
Thank you. Jason, I got a question, um, in regards to another grant that we were looking at in the amount of two million dollars that we wanted to see if we can use that potentially with the creek project. What is the status of that?
We're working through that application process, just trying to gather all that we need to gather for the application then.
Okay, are we going to meet the deadline for that?
Uh, we should, it's, uh, May thirty-first, I believe.
It's May thirty-first for that deal, huh?
That's right.
Okay.
For the pre-application and then, um, a few months after that for the actual, um, post-approval.
Okay. All right, and then I'll let, I'll also ask you, the R F Qs, that's related to the creek project, um, what's the status of those at this current, this current point?
So we had, uh, a conversation with the consultant, um, trust, and, uh, trying to get some more data from him. He's sent me some information here recently and so we're just compiling all that data and pull that together.
Okay. All right, and with the R F Q, um, with us, uh, moving forward with the R F Q, what kind of timeframe are we looking at, um, that being completed and online?
We're looking to get that out in April, in April.
Okay.
So, so, so still, we would hope that by first part of July, that we'll be going through the process and we'll be ready to enter into a contract to, to have engineer on, on, on staff.
Okay. All right. And then, uh, has there, what role has the, um, conversation with the, um, Army Corps of Engineers had on our process, on our, on our side? Has it slowed us down any? Has it detracted us any?
It has not. I spoke with them today, um, once recently and, um, they are looking through their programs to see if they have a program, um, that can provide any assistance for us, um, on the face of it, in the nature of our project. They're not sure if, um, they'll be able to assist or not. But they've got a few staff members they've confirmed with back in the office and, um, but I explained to the town that we're here, the last meeting, um, the nature of the project with the state direct investment, Jifa loan, uh, the nature of the project. They weren't aware of all that, so, um, they're not really sure how their programs mesh with our project. So we're still working through that, but it's not so, we're, we're still.
Hey, can I follow up on that? Just, just to be clear, what we're trying to do is get the Corps of Engineers to throw in some money, right? That's what this, the letter of intent and all that. They still have, regardless of whether or not they put in money, they're going to have to approve this project as the flood management project, right?
Yeah.
So regardless, we'll have to work with them and they will have to approve this thing.
You may not be working with the two individuals that were here.
Not necessarily, okay, but we'll be working with the Corps of Engineers.
That's right.
All right, and let me ask you, um, any funding that we receive from the Corps of Engineers, will that dictate their role? For example, if they put any funding towards it, does it then become their project or does it still remain a power?
Say it becomes their project necessarily, um, but they would have more. I wouldn't say it becomes their project specifically, um, it would still be a joint, it'd become a joint project at that point. It depends on the nature of whatever assistance that they provide. If it was one of the, up to ten million dollar projects, um, they would have more hands-on involvement than what they would have, um, just going through the regulatory side, the permitting side. But, um, we're not really sure if one of their programs closely aligns with, uh, an opportunity to fund this, this project.
Yeah, so, so, so that's what they're doing now is, is after they've had the conversation, is, is wanting to see if there is a grant program that they have on their books that actually meshes with our project. And so once they make that determination, they'll get back with Jason and say, yeah, we have something, or they might say, no, we don't have anything. And if they don't have anything, that really doesn't change anything from what, what we were going to do, it just, it just changes, we're not going to have cash that could have helped.
And that, that exploration can, I'm sorry, and that explanation can, or explore, it can happen concurrently with the R F Q and everything else, right? So it's not going to rotate time.
Yeah, that's intended.
Is there anything else from city manager either council? All right, we'll move down to agenda item seventeen, which is public comments, are there any comments from the general public? All right, seeing that there is no, we'll move down to agenda item eighteen, which is consideration of a motion to enter into executive session to discuss personnel matters as well as state annual potential litigation in accordance with O C G A fifty dash fourteen dash three. Be, um, is there a motion to go into executive session? Yeah? Yeah? Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.